The June 7th, 2017 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV, Cable Channel 2, in our closed caption for hearing-impaired viewers. Please note, customers of CenturyLink's and Cox Communication, you may view this program in high-definition on Channel 1002. Council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet The proceedings will be rebroadcast, KCLV, Channel 2, and the web, the Wednesday, the meeting at 8:00 p.m., Friday 4:00 a.m., Saturday 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 5:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire-detection-and-suppression sprinkler systems. If the alarm should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers out to the mezzanine; proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Street. Welcome back. That's unbelievable. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment-related items on the agenda, citizen participation or public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk up front. Cards are available online, in the clerk's office, or at the rear of these chambers. If you don't submit a card, does not prevent you from speaking under public comments, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone's present today who has need for hearing-impaired equipment, please come forward and see our city clerk's staff. And if you parked in the parking garage across the street, please be sure to have your ticket validated by security officers when exiting. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Benny Jack's Victory Outreach Las Vegas and remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance. Good morning and thank you.
Okay, this is the first time I've done it. Push the button, that is. If I could have every head, body, and eye closed, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you this beautiful day, Lord, and we thank you, God, for your presence, we thank you for your protection, Lord, and right now, Lord, I pray for everything that's going to transpire, my God, this day, Lord. I pray for Mayor Carolyn Goodman, God, her counsel, Lord, that, Father, everything would go according to your plans, Lord. God, give them wisdom, discernment, God, everything that they need, Father. Just keep your hand upon everything, God, that there will be no confusion, God, but that everything will go in order, Lord. And we thank you, Lord, for that, in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
(Clerk) I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, the Constitution of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, civil, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, we will be continuing on now with our ceremonial portion, if the mics work. After he opens the gate for Councilwoman, isn't he polite? Okay, Councilman Beers, it's yours. You are front and center, Citizen of the Month.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to have the Citizen of the Month Award fall to Ward 2 this month, and the recipient is one Michael Tomko. Please come forward, Mike, and let us roast you for a few minutes. As you'll hear when Mike speaks, he was born in Long Island, New York, and still, after 12 years living in Ward 2, has just a tinge of an accent. He is a former New York City Fire Department, 22-years-of-service guy, worked for the city here as a fire dispatcher and supervisor for Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, and retired about, what, two years ago, pushing, two years ago? Since then, he's been very active in the community, which is why we're here honoring him today, in addition to the Neighborhood Watch Group in his neighborhood. He's a big supporter of a bunch of different community pride and community projects. He is an official ambassador for the city's treasured Walupi Canyon Trailhead, which is one of the great undiscovered parks, mostly undiscovered because it's one of the newest ones, located at Alta and Walupi. It's got eight-tenths-of-a-mile, beautiful walking trail through gorgeously landscaped desert, and we do our Ward 2 walkers every Tuesday and Thursday morning at 7:00 in the morning, and Mike is always there. Pretty sure Mike is always there, his dog, Jack, is always there, usually toeing Mike. Currently, he's engaged with the Arts District, Fremont Street Experience, East Fremont, and Downtown Project, looking for a place to design and build a 9-1-1 memorial, which we could kind of use downtown. He organizes the Las Vegas Firefighter September 11th procession and tribute each year in downtown Las Vegas on Fremont Street since 2003, and that draws hundreds of firefighters and police from all over the West Coast, and they're working with the Fremont Street on finding a permanent place for this to happen, as well as the memorial. He also organizes in the other half of the year the annual Las Vegas Valley Firefighter St. Patrick's Day Parade and Irish Street Party in downtown Las Vegas, an event not to be missed, no matter what your heritage. And his latest project, we think, is pretty cool. He came up with this idea to approach our local high schools and middle schools to see if the art departments would like to take on the project of painting the roll-up doors at the fire stations. So everyone imagine a fire station in your head, and they have these big roll-up doors that trucks come screaming out of when somebody calls 9-1-1. He is going to coordinate these young artists to design and to paint these fire doors with paint and supplies donated by, he'll tell us in a second, somebody other than taxpayers. It's a really cool project, and we're really excited to see how it ends up and perhaps see if it spreads citywide. So with that, Mike, thank you for everything that you do. You are the June 2017 Citizen of the Month, City of Las Vegas.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know if you saw, but over here is a sign with your name on it that will be placed up outside City Hall down here by the parking garage. We expect you to come down and feed the meter every day for the next month and take selfies in front of it. So with that, Mike, would you like to give us a few words?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, City Council. This is truly an honor. It's a great honor to be a citizen in this wonderful city. It's actually fun, now that I'm retired, to get involved in all these cool projects involving the fire service, schoolkids, and saving the taxpayers' money. Let's do this stuff with donations, public and private-sector stuff. And for those of you who are wondering about the firehouse doors, what we're doing is the students are designing murals with a patriotic or a Las Vegas twist on it that they will paint along with art teachers in the different schools in the district, along with artists from the Arts District. We're going to start with Station 44 on Washington by Buffalo, and then after that, we're going to do Station 7 down by Summerlin Hospital, Station 2, and Station 47 also in Ward 2. So again, thank you, this is such a great honor.
Thank you, on behalf of all of us, Mike, thank you for pushing all these ideas on the city. It's pretty cool. You're a great guy, thanks. Yeah, let's move over, go over here and take a picture.
I'd like to invite our Planning Director, Tom Parago, to join us at the podium. He always sits so far away, but it's nice, very athletic, I want you to know, he stays in shape. He bikes from home, do you still bike to work, Mr. Parago?
No, I don't.
He gave it up, he's not so young anymore, okay. And we do have showers here, for those of you who inquire about people who bike a long way, they could shower here, so the aroma of each individual's very pure, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, our employees strive to be superheroes in the workplace, meeting our values of action, which stands for achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, and ownership now. They build our community and make life better, and today, I am proud to announce that the Employee of the Month is Business Licensing Officer, Anthony Vogel. So Anthony, come on down and join us, please. And let me tell you a little bit about this wonderful man, aside from the fact, how many years you've been with us? How many years?
Next month will be two years.
Next month, two years, congratulations. Okay, Anthony is one of the reasons that our licensing process has been greatly streamlined and more customer-friendly. After joining us in July of 2015, I could have cheated and looked, he took the initiative to look for the inefficiencies in how licensed officers have worked, and Anthony came up with a plan to do away with the tedious manual checklist and made use of technology to help simplify the licensing process in the field, not only for our employees, but also for our residents. He helped the department move from paper to iPads and iPhones and made sure that the technology worked in city vehicles. The result has been faster and easier services for our private business owners and for those seeking to own businesses in our community. In addition, Anthony acts as the first level of technical support for his team and provides investigative support for other city departments and law enforcement agencies. So thank you, Anthony, for all that you do. We're proud to present you with the Employee of the Month Award. Lucky for you that we just all look so nice in this photograph, it's a very nice photograph, and we will put you right in there. Photoshop yourself in there. So, in addition, and on our left over here, this sign, you will see your name on it, which will be posted in front of City Hall on Main Street, so you can go back and forth, take thousands of pictures, and I know, before you get a chance to speak, because we are so grateful to you, I know Tom Parago really wants to say something.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, what I really appreciate about Tony is that he saw an opportunity to make things better for his coworkers, for his customers, and for the city, and he took the initiative, and he took the risk, and he made it happen, and that's awesome. It speaks volumes of the kind of department that we have in planning, it speaks volumes for the leadership, Suzanne Warren, his section manager, Mary McLehone, the Business License Manager, and Karen Duddleston, the Deputy Director, creating an environment, and all of his coworkers, a supportive team where somebody can innovate, take risk, and make things better. And so I really appreciate what Tony's done, and Anthony, and everybody in that division. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to add to that, that thank you, first of all, everybody, thank you, City Council, Mayor, for this. I also want to thank my team, Business License Enforcement, and also the Systems Analysts over at the DSC, because it was really a team effort, everybody came together, everybody put in an effort on this, so we were able to achieve this, so I want to give them a round of applause and say thank you for all of them. And thanks Suzanne Warren and Karen Duddleston and Mary McLehone for giving me the opportunities to achieve a goal and to contribute to the team, and I cannot express enough how much I love working for the City of Las Vegas. Thank you.
How about a picture over there by the sign? So, your mother called you Anthony, and so my instructions in reading about this was Anthony, but I gather from everything that Tom spoke about, you're Tony?
Yes, I go by both, it doesn't matter.
Okay, so, step closer, if you would. Uh-huh, I just found out, he was born, raised here. Where'd you go to high school?
Actually, I homeschooled for high school.
Look how smart you are, so your mother's even better than giving you your Anthony name, she homeschooled you, so no wonder you're so good. Wonderful.
And my grandmother was actually the first city councilwoman in North Las Vegas, so she's instilled this, Cynthia Baumann.
Do Councilman Coffin, do you remember that name?
Cynthia Baumann?
Yes.
That was my grandmother.
Thank you, congratulations. Isn't that great, though? It is worth living here, I mean, my goodness, and how neat to be born here. Okay, our next item, I'd like to invite Las Vegas Business Press Publisher Debbie Donaldston to join us, and I understand you have a special presentation to make to the city, Debbie, so come on down. Is it edible, is what I want to know?
No, I am so sorry. I didn't know you had a hungry crowd this morning. Well, Mayor, I am myself honored to give this award. I have been in Las Vegas since July of 2017 and watched this city grow up and been a part of that pressure. Oh, 2000, July 2000, sorry. So 17 years, yeah. And watched the city grow up and watched you grow the city up, and the Business Press earlier this year went out for a call to entries for the most innovative organizations in the state, and we enlisted independent judges to judge those entries, and the City of Las Vegas entered in several categories, and when the scoring came back from the judges, you won in three categories, you received excellent scores in three different categories, two in the public sector for different projects, and one in science and technology. And we hosted an event where you had representatives at our gala event and gave the awards, but we'd like to present them to you here at the City Council meeting. And my colleague, Bessie Lee, has the three awards. So this one is for the City of Las Vegas Information Technologies, a public-sector And the City of Las Vegas in the public-sector category again, and then the City of Las Vegas in the science and technology category.
Yay, City of Las Vegas!
Yay! And if you want to read, yes, Go City! And if you want to read more detail about what the awards are about, you're welcome to go to businesspress.vegas and look under Special Sections, you'll see a lengthy article. And we also have a presentation from the Office of the Governor for you, a certificate of recognition for the City of Las Vegas.
Well, how exciting, thank you so much, Debbie.
You're very welcome.
Okay, so, wait, hold one sec, no glass. I think it was a clean sweep for IT, God bless the City of Las Vegas, does our team know what it's doing, and Go IT, except for today's microphone. Wonderful. Oh, thank you so much.
Very exciting, it is true, I mean, it's only because of the work that's done every single day here by so many that this happens, so this is really exciting, they're beautiful, and we need a netto share or something like that in the front lobby, so we can put up these beautiful trophies that we get. And thank you to Governor Sandoval, this is wonderful. And thank you, Debbie and team, this is just, it's an honor for us, and we're just thrilled because we all love it here and we love to work here, so this is grand. Okay, Mayor Protem, in his handsome jacket that he, when I came to work this morning, he pulled up next to me, and he did not have on a jacket, and he said, oh my goodness, now he lives up in Ward 6, so that's the northwest, so in order to get back here by 9:00, he had to drive all the way back there, speeding along, any tickets?
No, but the Highway Patrol's out.
Highway Patrol is out. Well, you just look very sharp, so come on in.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, an extra 36 miles to my morning, not a problem whatsoever. You know, every year, I get this awesome opportunity to highlight an amazing group in Las Vegas, and Las Vegas has an amazing relationship with Nevada Childseekers, and I'm not going to do this by myself, Heather Dodo, come down here and join me as we do this together. Galon, you can come on down here too, Galon Kim. This is Galon Kim, he is the recipient and winner of the Nevada Childseekers 2017 Poster Contest. I'm going to say a couple of words, I'm going to hand it over to you, Heather, do we have it up on the?
That is awesome.
So that's the poster, Galon, come over here, stand between me and Heather. Now, a little story about Heather, if I can just brag about you for a minute, okay? Years ago, I started a Northwest Youth Empowerment Council, and she was one of the first members of that council from which high school?
Northwest Tech.
Northwest Tech, and she has just skyrocketed with everything that she's been doing, and Heather, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you and your leadership in this community. Nevada Childseekers has served the Las Vegas community for over 30 years. They have done many things, including fingerprint ID kits, training to be safe online, bullying-prevention initiatives, which I think is probably the most important thing that you guys do, other than finding children and bringing them back to where they need to be, and they support and assist families of missing children. Today, we're here to recognize Galon Kim, a fifth grader at Richard Bryan Elementary School. For fun, he likes to learn things that are new and different from his teachers, he's still deciding on what he wants to be when you grow up, are you really? You're in the fifth grade? Councilwoman, he's taller than you! My goodness. So Heather's here with the poster, and I want to introduce Galon Kim, you give him a round of applause for being the poster contest winner. Heather, I'll hold the poster for a second, and you talk about what's going on.
So every year, we partner with the Department of Justice to do this poster contest, and it's to raise awareness about the missing children, not only in Nevada, but nationally. A lot of the times, we forget about our missing children, and the key to finding them and bringing them home is to raise awareness and to actually have people out there looking for them, and the poster contest is one of the ways that we bring awareness to the community, so we can tell people, keep your eye out, look out, there are kids, our kids are out there, they're missing and they need help, and we can find them and bring them home. So we're really, really pleased to have Galon win this for the state competition, but not only that, he won second place in the national competition as well, so we're very, very proud, and we're giving this as a present to him, he's going to take it to school, everyone's going to see it, and we're really, really excited to give him this honor, and he did an excellent job. The crazy story about this, though, is we had just received all of our entries from all the schools, and we were about to choose a different poster for first place, and this one was the very last one we received, it was received the day before we were about to submit it, and we found it, we opened it up, and we were like, this is the one, this is the winner, just in time, so we're really, really proud, congratulations, Galon.
Thank you, Galon, I want you to tell us a little bit about this poster, what inspired you to do it, because it looks pretty dang good.
Well, I just kind of got the ideas one by one, and the more I thought about it, the more details I added, and the more details I added, the more it became like this.
Pretty cool, you can tell us about it.
So this side represents the darkness of losing a child and how it feels so lonely and sad and darkness, and this side, the eagle and the flag represents America bringing our children back.
Awesome, that is awesome. That is awesome, Galon, you are so creative, you look great, you like that? Now, what's with this, oh, the lonely dog with the teddy bear, what's that about?
My mom told me to put a dog to provoke people's hearts.
Did it work? Did it work? Yes, Mom, where are your parents? Oh, there you are. Good job, Mom. Okay, Galon, I'm going to give you one more thing before you leave here, okay? It is an honor and privilege for the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Las Vegas to recognize those individuals who contribute to the betterment of our community. Galon Kim has furthered the mission of bringing home missing children through art. The Nevada Childseekers Organization works to encourage children to be safe online and offers support to families of missing children. So the Mayor and the Las Vegas City Council do hereby recognize Galon Kim on June 7th, 2017, as the winner of the Nevada Childseekers 2017 Poster Contest in the City of Las Vegas, and ask all citizens to join us. Give him another round of applause. Thank you very much, you're awesome. Thank you, Heather, good to see you again. Thank you, Mayor.
That is really, it's fabulous, you are very tall, now Mom is not as tall as you are either. Do you have a brother and sister?
Only child.
Only, oh my goodness, so you're spoiled.
I wouldn't say that, I guess.
Oh, now, you're doing a very good job, he says he's not spoiled. I mean, I know, you are wonderful, we're very proud of you. And I think Councilman Steve Wolfson really was, wasn't he, started the awareness of, yes?
One more thing for me.
You have that, how about a good luck mayor chip? What kind of a pin are you giving him? A bling-bling? Okay, you've got a bling-bling, and you get a good luck mayor chip, and one for your mom. We wish you the very best, and congratulations to you, very proud of you, and thank you, you also, you get one. Well, you get a hug from the Mayor Protem, that's even better. Congratulations, Mom, congratulations. Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's beautiful, I mean, it really is.
We want to know what you're going to be when you grow up.
Yes, of course. Let's just, we, right up there, right here, we can do it right here, because we have Sean, Shane is in the back, blue shirt.
Take a picture. Okay, let's all line up side by side.
Do you want to get Mom in a picture?
Yes, can we get Mom in a picture? Is that here, come on over here. Hi, Mom, no, don't stand there.
Christine is going to be lining down.
This is for Dad.
Oh, and Mom and Dad get one. Good health, mayor trip, and second one more. So I'm pushing here, I'm growing all of them. Somebody has a tall jean somewhere.
Somewhere, right?
Such an honor, thank you. Oh, such an honor to have him with us. Thank you very much. We're so proud. So proud. That's beautiful. Gosh, and for our next item, our special events czar or czares. Where are you, Esther Reinicki?
Zorres.
Czarres. This is the hostess with the mostess and keeps everything moving at City Hall. So Esther, take it away. Tell us what you're doing this morning.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we had a fabulous Eldorado Days Parade on Saturday, May 13th. We had close to 90 entries. We had a lot of great quality, a lot of people out watching it. The mayor, of course, was our lead in the parade. And I wanted to take a few minutes today to introduce our parade winners, and I'm going to start with the big one first because I've got them here making a fun little presentation for us. The mayor's winner and overall winner of the parade this year is Danzadel Carrizo, my favorite group.
Are they coming down?
They're going to. Now you can see why they're the winners. Thank you so much. Jesse Perez, the spokesperson, can you talk now after doing all of that?
My niece, Adriana, talks.
Adriana. Okay, can you just come up and explain a little bit about your group and the dance and where you're from? Everybody, come on down.
Oh, congratulations. Thank you. We're so proud.
Hi, good morning. Sorry, I'm a little winded. Um, we are originally from Zula Huaishihuahua. That's where my grandmother, my father, and my family comes from. Our dance is part of that region, which is the southwest region of the United States. We are so excited to be part of such a historical parade in Las Vegas. What you saw is what we do throughout the whole parade. So we are just so thankful and honored to be the recipients of this award. Thank you.
Well, the meaning of the dance, it's basically, sorry, it's basically a war dance.
It has Apache ties. So basically, it's just not a dance. There's rituals, there's symbols. Our drums are our heartbeat. With the drums, we do our steps, and that's the soul of our dance. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Danzadel Carrizo, I believe, has been with the parade. I know since I've been doing it in 2005, so we appreciate you guys coming and supporting the parade every year, and congratulations. All right, really quick, I'm going to bring up the other groups if you're here. The overall creativity was Basic High School, MC Junior ROTC. Is anybody here from that group? There we go. Who did I just say? All right, Basic, thank you so much. If you want to just stand here for a minute. Overall theme, Mariachi Encendido. Are you guys here from Delsol? Anybody here? Best in Floats, Bonnie Springs Ranch. I know Alan was coming. Did he make it? Nope. I know Rita's here. Best in Equestrian Group. She brought 20 horses out. Oh, Alan, you're with Bonnie Springs, right? Here's Bonnie Springs. Thank you. Sin City Riders, Best in Equestrian. Our Best Car Club, we had the Historic Preservation Commission and the Southern Nevada Car Club. I don't know that they could be here today. And the Best Walking Group was Eldorado High School and J ROTC. Anybody here from that group? So we had a great parade. Thank you all for coming today with any event, you know, that it takes a lot of people to do. I want to thank some of the volunteers that help me on the parade every year. If you're here, please stand up. Kelly Marja, I know Ally helped us this year. She's new. Tim Hacker, are you here? Tim helped us, so thank you, everybody. The date has already been set. Chase Boberg with PBR was here a few minutes ago. The date has been set for next year, so you'll all be getting the application. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Esther. What a great job, all of you. Thank you and congratulations. That was magnificent. Thank you. We really appreciate it. We look forward to seeing you next year. Please be sure you come back. How great to carry on the tradition. Just beautiful. And that you have young people involved is wonderful. This is our grandmother.
No habla inglés, habla puro español.
People speak Spanish here.
Okay, gracias a todos, gracias a usted por invitarnos al desfile de Dorado. Muchas gracias.
We're proud of, thank you. I can understand, I can't say a word, but, and I breathe Spanish, that's all I want you to know, but we're so proud in the tradition because if you don't remember your history and your culture, it is a tragedy for this community. We are just a wonderful mix of people, and we love it. And so thank you for sharing this with us. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, a last picture? Where, where do we want to do this? Maybe if we all move over a little to the left.
Just a little aside, and we can move this now.
Oh, no, but you're, you're wounded.
No, I'm, I got these two.
Look at this. Esther, come on down in the picture. Esther, come on down. Okay, Councilwoman, can you be seen?
Yes, I can be seen.
Fine. And what's wonderful about the group is they performed all the way from Charleston, all the way past the review stand, all the way down to Stewart. Right, I mean, that's a lot of exercise. Okay. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Annalee. Happy birthday to you. Annalee, how old? How old?
Eight.
Eight years old. How wonderful. And Annalee danced or played the drum?
She danced.
She danced. Beautiful. Look at that beautiful skirt. Thank you all for coming down. Thank you for all our winners. We're so grateful. We look forward to seeing you next year, and Esther, as always, thank you. All right, so we are going to take a quick, while we change over the technology today because we've got some erps and burps there. We'll do a quick 10-minute, and we'll be right back. Thank you.
Congratulations. The school on Bulky and Jones, it's a private school. Seventh-day Adventist Church is right next to it.
Oh, yeah, right next to the mortuary across the street.
So they asked me to speak. I had a great time last night. I went home till like 9:30.
Well, and we have that wonderful garden there, just, you know, across the street. I'll give that back. Yes, we have little personal gardens in.
Hi.
Test.
You guys are talking to me?
I'm not going to work. I can't because my knee, so my wife is lame and saying, you know, my knee out at the right time. I went to Canada. No, I did. I'm pretty going to stay tomorrow. It's about over there. One more to stress. I know. We'll get by. Thank you. Love that.
Good morning, Esther. Should I fill out a card? I, that, that was the old procedure.
And your name, sir, please. My name is Michael Schaefer. I've been around the town since the early '70s. I used to be a councilman for 12 years with the government of San Diego, where I got to know Orin Gregson as your mayor at various conventions. That's going back quite a ways. It was so nice when I moved here to find my friend Orin Gregson as the mayor. So, that was a little consistency. I want to commend you for having a little input at the start of the meeting, as well as at the end of the meeting. That's a real courtesy to the citizens. I might suggest when somebody doesn't show up, like Councilman Barlow, if you mention he's excused or so, I mean, I hope he's okay. He's just not here today, and I'm happy to see all of you. Yes, he's actually in Pennsylvania, speaking at a group. Oh, we see a lot of Councilman Anthony out in Sun City, Summerlin, when, where I live, and are very proud of the job he's doing for us. I just wanted to come down here and mention that I sent you all a little memo. I usually have two or three graduate students living in my very fine home, and I did get one that turned out to be a bad apple. And when he lost a job as an Uber driver, he turned on me, and he began to put my groceries out into the backyard and tell me to wake up and have breakfast with the pigeons in the backyard. And he would put my medicines out there. When I went to church on Easter Sunday, he would move my furniture and bedroom into the garage for storage. I finally was able to get a protective order against him, but one of the things I did to try to encourage him to leave is he had two cars that he was renting. One was always just parked in front of the house and not used, and I called the city. I'm sure you have spoken with Councilman Anthony. I mean, this is a public comment, one minute only, so if you please. Yes, okay. Well, I'll, I'll summer. I invited the city to come out and write a three-day ticket on him, and by the time the city came out four days later, he was gone. But I had a car parked out in front of there that was disabled, that I was trying to get fixed. I had gone down to DMV and canceled the registration, as I was required to do, because I canceled my insurance. Okay, so if you'll move this along, sir, please. And your office investigated and found out it was a stale registration that I'd prepaid and wrote me a $75 ticket. I discussed it with your very. Thank you. I think your time's up, sir. You've been, we've given you three minutes. I discussed it with Brandy Stanley. Does a very fine job with you. I just thought she should have resolved it, and I would just like. Okay, thank you very much, sir. I'd like her to have a little more discretion to look at those things. Thank you. Thank you, madam. Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward, state your name for the record. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 11. For possible action, any items that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forth and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I think we got, let's see. The applicant has requested an abeyance on Agenda Item 55, SUP 7, I mean, 67474. It's an abeyance item, special use permit, public hearing applicant owners, the Sylvia Brun Family Trust, appeal to denial by the Planning Commission at 2508 Kalida Court. Ask that to be obeyed till the July 19th meeting in 2017. And I think Councilman Coffin, did you?
Are you ready for the abeyance?
Yes.
Not sure. Does this work now? Okay. Thank you very much. I would like to add one to the list of abeyances for today. It's Item Number 51. That has to do with fines for nonconformance with our zoning rules. And I'm going to move for a 90-day or first meeting in September. But I just want to say that some of the things that this person is appealing and why we need some time to understand it, some of the things that are going on, Mr. Mayor Protam, are that somehow in our code, we have had to cite them, I mean, our staff had to cite them, for two U.S. flags posted on the roof with one from California and one from Texas. He needs to remove one U.S. flag, and he can put up another state or entity. Empty flag poles on roof should be removed. So, what happens over the years is things do creep into your ordinances and zoning codes and things. Frankly, I mean, you've got a 3x5 flag versus a 30-foot by 50-foot at a Herb's gas station. So, one has to say, what is the equivalent? False equivalences, really. So, I'd like to take 90 days, take the rest of the summer on this item, put it away for the first meeting in September. Item Number 51.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, and with your permission, Your Honor, so we'll obey Agenda Item 55 and Agenda Item 51. Let me read that into the record, with your permission.
Yes, and then Councilwoman also has an additional item.
Agenda Item 51 is a hearing for possible action to consider the appeal regarding the nuisance notice and order to comply located at 625 South Las Vegas Boulevard. Property owner Diane Leslie Trust. Diane Leslie Trust, and that is Ward 3. Councilman Coffin. Councilman Coffin has requested that be obeyed till September 6th, 2017. Councilwoman?
Okay. All this modern equipment. I'd like to state that Item Number 56 will be obeyed until the second meeting in August.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman. Your Honor, if you'll indulge me also, that Agenda Item 56 is SDR 68280. It is a public hearing applicant owner Safety Institute Building LLC for possible action on request for major amendment to previously approved plot plan review Z0035-85 for waiver of Title 19.08 landscaping irrigation requirements on .033 acres located at 820 South Valley View Boulevard. It is C1 Limited Commercial in Councilwoman Arcanian's Ward, and she's requested that be obeyed till the August 16th, 2017 meeting.
Yes, and this has been discussed with planning, and I left a message on the applicant's phone last night about it. I just, she wants to plant plants that weren't in the original conditions, and I'm not sure it's going to work, but that'll give us some time to see if it works.
Okay. That would be my motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thank you. This is a motion. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 12, for possible action to prove the final minutes by reference to the April 19th, 2017 Regular City Council meeting. Is there a motion, please?
Motion to prove the minutes.
Thank you. This is a motion to prove the minutes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I believe that I was, I had asked if at the item, at the end of Item Number 11, I could make a motion, and that would be, I could make a request, and that is, could we move Item Number 37 up at this time?
Okay. Let's go ahead on the approval of the minutes, which is Agenda Item 12. Please vote on that, and please post. And then we'll go ahead and take a request from Councilwoman. That motion carries on Agenda Item 37.
That's right. Agenda Item Number 37, and I request that you call this item forward at this time.
Thank you very much. This motion to bring Agenda Item 37 forward. We don't need a motion on that, and so, let me read that. Hold one sec while I get to it.
Is that we've grown to be in 14 countries now. And we brought in French production, French TC on the AB Motors, the largest in Europe. They filmed the entire event from the Las Vegas sign, the procession, downtown activities, the car show, celebrities, and this will be broadcast in the fall to over 4 million viewers in Europe.
Oh, my goodness.
So it'll be promoting all of Las Vegas. Again, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council.
Thank you. We're so grateful to you. Your whole family.
You're awesome. Love you, man. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul. Yes. You'll keep that. You'll do that. Yes, sir.
Morning, Anna. Should I fill out a card? That was the old procedure.
And your name, sir, please.
My name is Michael Schaefer. I've been around the town since the early 70s. I used to be a councilman for 12 years with the government of San Diego where I got to know Orin Gregson as your mayor at various conventions.
That's going back quite a ways.
It was so nice when I moved here to find my friend Orin Gregson as the mayor. So that was a little consistency. I want to commend you for having a little input at the start of the meeting as well as at the end of the meeting. That's a real courtesy to the citizens. I might suggest when somebody doesn't show up, like Councilman Barlow, if you mention he's excused or so, I mean, I hope he's okay. He's just not here today, and I'm happy to see all of you.
Yes, he's actually in Pennsylvania speaking at a group.
Oh, we see a lot of Councilman Anthony out in Sun City, Summerlin, where I live, and are very proud of the job he's doing for us. I just wanted to come down here and mention that I sent you all a little memo. I usually have two or three graduate students living in my very fine home, and I did get one that turned out to be a bad apple. And when he lost a job as an Uber driver, he turned on me. And he began to put my groceries out into the backyard and tell me to wake up and have breakfast with the pigeons in the backyard. And he would put my medicines out there. When I went to church on Easter Sunday, he would move my furniture and bedroom into the garage for storage. I finally was able to get a protective order against him, but one of the things I did to try to encourage him to leave is he had two cars that he was renting. One was always just parked in front of the house and not used.
And I'm sure you have spoken with Councilman Anthony. I mean, this is a public comment, one minute only.
Yes, okay. Well, I'll summarize. I invited the city to come out and write a three-day ticket on him, and by the time the city came out four days later, he was gone. But I had a car parked out in front of there that was disabled, that I was trying to get fixed. I had gone down to DMV and canceled the registration as I was required to do because I canceled my insurance.
Okay, so if you'll move this along, sir, please.
And your office investigated and found out it was a stale registration that I'd prepaid and wrote me a $75 ticket.
Thank you.
I discussed it with your very—
Thank you. I think your time's up, sir. You've been—we've given you three minutes.
I discussed it with Brandy Stanley, does a very fine job with you. I just thought she should have resolved it, and I would just like—
Okay, thank you very much, sir. We appreciate it.
I'd like her to have a little more discretion to look at those things.
Thank you.
Thank you, madam.
Thank you. Anyone else, please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning to you all. I'm Danielle Bassin with Simple ESG, and I'm speaking on Agenda Item 32.
Yep, can you—
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or just pull that up a little bit towards you.
No problem. First time I've heard that. Danielle Bassin with Simple ESG, and I'm speaking on Agenda Item Number 32. We feel that having the council actually make the decision on this issue is a conflict of interest. The councils who originally approved the business impact statement, council also approved the resulting solid waste ordinance revisions and the 10-year extension on Republic Services' exclusive franchise agreement. Therefore, we would ask that council recuse itself from making this decision and defer it to an objective third party to ensure that the interests of all residents, business owners are appropriately represented. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, please come forward, state your name for the record. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 11. For possible action, any items that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forth and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think we got, let's see, the applicant has requested an abeyance on Agenda Item 55, SUP 7—I mean, 67474. It's an abeyance item, special use permit, public hearing, applicant owners, the Sylvia Brun Family Trust, appeal to denial by the Planning Commission at 2508 Kalita Court. Ask that to be obeyed till the July 19th meeting in 2017. And I think Councilman Coffin, did you—
Are you ready for the abeyance?
Yes.
Not sure. Does this work now? Okay, thank you very much. I would like to add one to the list of abeyances for today. It's Item Number 51. That has to do with fines for nonconformance with our zoning rules. And I'm going to move for a 90-day or first meeting in September. But I just want to say that some of the things that this person is appealing and why we need some time to understand it, some of the things that are going on, Mr. Mayor Protem, are that somehow in our code, we have had to cite them—I mean, our staff had to cite them—for two U.S. flags posted on the roof with one from California and one from Texas. He needs to remove one U.S. flag, and he can put up another state or entity. Empty flag poles on roof should be removed. So what happens over the years is things do creep into your ordinances and zoning codes and things. Frankly, I mean, you've got a 3-by-5 flag versus a 30-foot by 50-foot at a Herb's Gas Station. So one has to say, what is the equivalent? False equivalences, really. So I'd like to take 90 days, take the rest of the summer on this item, put it away for the first meeting in September. Item Number 51.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. And with your permission, Your Honor, so we'll obey Agenda Item 55 and Agenda Item 51. Let me read that into the record, with your permission.
Yes, and then Councilwoman also has an additional item.
Agenda Item 51 is a hearing for possible action to consider the appeal regarding the nuisance notice and order to comply located at 625 South Las Vegas Boulevard. Property owner Diane Leslie Trust. Diane Leslie Trust, and that is Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Councilman Coffin has requested that be obeyed till September 6th, 2017. Councilwoman?
Yeah. Do you want to push your button?
Long guard.
Okay. All this modern equipment. I'd like to state that Item Number 56 will be obeyed until the second meeting in August.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. Your Honor, if you'll indulge me, also, that Agenda Item 56 is SDR 68280. It is a public hearing. Applicant owner Safety Institute Building LLC for possible action on request for major amendment to previously approved plot plan review Z0035-85 for waiver of Title 19.08 landscaping irrigation requirements on .033 acres located 820 South Valley View Boulevard. It is C1 Limited Commercial. In Councilwoman Tarkanian's ward, and she's requested that be obeyed till the August 16th, 2017 meeting.
Yes, and this has been discussed with planning, and I left a message on the applicant's phone last night about it. I just—she wants to plant plants that weren't in the original conditions, and I'm not sure it's going to work, but that'll give us some time to see if it works.
Okay, that would be my motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. This is a motion. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 12, for possible action to prove the final minutes by reference to the April 19th, 2017 Regular City Council meeting. Is there a motion, please?
Motion to prove the minutes.
Thank you. This is motion to prove the minutes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I believe that I was—I had asked if at the item—at the end of Item Number 11, I could make a motion, and that would be—I could make a request, and that is, could we move Item Number 37 up at this time?
Okay, let's go ahead on the approval of the minutes, which is Agenda Item 12. Please vote on that, and please post. And then we'll go ahead and take a request from Councilwoman. That motion carries on Agenda Item 37.
That's right. Agenda Item Number 37, and I request that you call this item forward at this time.
Thank you very much. This motion to bring Agenda Item 37 forward. We don't need a motion on that, and so let me read that. Hold one sec while I get to it. Okay. Whoops. Bill Number 2017-16, for possible action, amends the city's licensing and zoning regulations to delete categories for bed and breakfast in and boarding or rooming house, and to revise regulations and requirements pertaining to short-term residential rentals. Sponsored by Councilwoman Lois Tarkanian, this bill is being cosponsored by Councilwoman and Councilman Bob Beers. So if you will then continue on.
All right. I'd like to move that this item be referred back to the next recommending committee on June 19th in order to complete the public hearing on this bill, which we were not able to complete at the last recommending committee. This will give an opportunity for those who were not heard, those who were not heard at the last hearing, a chance to speak. The recommending committee is the best opportunity for concerned citizens to be heard on this matter. I have also asked that the bill be considered at a time certain, at the 11:30 a.m. time certain on June 21st, which would be our council meeting. While this may not be an open public hearing at the discretion of the mayor, all interested people may want to attend that meeting as well. Thank you. My motion, however, is to refer it back to a recommending committee so that those who were not heard at the last hearing are given—at the last hearing of the recommending committee be given an opportunity to speak.
So that's June 19th.
Your Honor.
And recommending's at 10 o'clock. It will probably be held here in City Council chambers, but we will post that to make sure. And again, it's the public comment on this Agenda Item 37 to give the public the opportunity to finish up all the public hearing and commentary prior to the June 21st City Council meeting.
It's just—yeah, just as you said, we're trying to do it in order to be able to give everybody an opportunity to speak to the full recommending committee.
Thank you very much. So that is a motion.
Your Honor.
Yes, please.
Yes, I just want to ask the maker of the motion, which I will support, but I wanted to see if we could put a time limit on the committee meeting. We went through our schedules so badly last time that we had to cancel meetings, and then ultimately Councilmen Anthony and I had to leave early. And after almost three hours, so I'm just wondering if we could put like a two-hour limit on the meeting so we can have schedules?
No, because it is a public hearing. I think what we could do, though, is ask representatives, if we have in the past, to select a speaker so you don't have every single person coming up and repeating everything. But I don't think—it is a public hearing, and we want to hear from our public, so we would just go ahead and have it.
Okay, I'll leave it alone. I'll go for it.
Unless there's anything from legal comment on that. Val, or—
That's an appropriate motion. We won't know until the time of the hearing whether two hours is sufficient. It may be sufficient, it may not be, because I understand there may be changes proposed at that meeting, in which case there may be new commentary that hasn't been heard before. So it's difficult for us to set a time limit today, but that will certainly be the prerogative of the committee.
Okay. Thank you. So that committee, at this point, will be Councilman Anthony, Councilman Barlow, and Councilman Coffin, dependent upon their schedules, but tentatively. So there is a motion now for that on Agenda Item 37. Would you please vote, and please post? Thank you. That motion carries. Okay, we will now move on to Agenda Item 13 through 31 on the consent agenda, considered to be routine, recommended for approval by the departments, and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items council wishes to bring forward?
Yes, Your Honor. I'd like to pull forward Agenda Item 31.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
With that, Your Honor, I would—
Let me read that in, if I can find it. It is the last one, correct?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the consent agenda—
Through 30. I'm going to move—to make a motion to approve the agenda, consent agenda, 13 through 30, and then we'll hear 31. So all, please vote, and please post. Okay. And that motion carries. So now we'll go on to Agenda Item 31. For possible action to approve staff assisting with the development startup costs of the Clark County School District Recovery High School for adolescents in recovery not to exceed $100,000, RDA education set aside in reference to all wards. Good morning. And you'll have to push that little—you got it. You're on, and I'll turn mine on.
Hello? Good morning, Mayor, and members of council. I'm Lori Lopez Priest, Administrative Officer with the Department of Youth Development and Social Innovation. Staff is requesting approval to allocate up to $100,000 in RDA education set aside funds for the Recovery High School to provide a supportive learning environment for adolescents in recovery. These funds will further assist with startup costs to include beautification of the site, including painting, murals, a meditation center, a learning garden, and other items related to student success. There are currently 36 Recovery High Schools operating in 14 different states, but this will be the first all-public recovery school in the nation and is scheduled to open for the 2017-18 school year. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Jeff Horn, Clark County School District School Associate Superintendent, to provide an overview of the Recovery High School. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor Goodman, Mayor Protem, Ross, and the City Council. It's an honor to be here today, and I'm—I'm sorry. My name's Jeff Horn. I'm a School Associate Superintendent with Clark County School District. It's an honor to be here today for this great partnership to continue with the city. We've partnered with, obviously, the Clark County School District. The state of Nevada has partnered with us as well. We have coalitions with the PAC Coalition, and so many other members of our community have come together for this endeavor, which is now a reality. It's now something I don't have to say is proposed. It's actually going to happen in the fall, and so the city of Las Vegas has been a huge part of this. We've had so many individuals from the city, including yourself, Mayor. Mayor Protem, Ross, has been hugely involved with this project and supportive of this. We had several members of the City Council and employees from the city speak on this initiative at our school board meeting, where we heard this, and they passed it unanimously to open the school. So I'm appreciative of the city coming and speaking in favor of this to open the school. What it is, we had a brief overview of it, but these are students K through—or I'm sorry, 9-312 that are in recovery from drug addiction. And we're going to provide supports for counseling, nurturing, a safe atmosphere where they can thrive and continue on with their program of recovery. And at the end of their four years, we're going to put a diploma in these kids' hands. Right now, these kids are dropping out of school. They're ending up in jails and institutions, and they're dying. And this is an option that we've never had in the Clark County School District. In fact, we've never had in the nation that's an all-public one, where every child from any part of the valley will be able to attend this school free of charge with the supports that we're going to give them to make sure that they're successful. There's a couple of things that I'd like to put on the record. One, I have a passion for this, obviously, because I'm an educator for many years. I was a former math teacher at Principal Green Valley High School in my current role. I'm an Associate Superintendent with the school district, where I have the pleasure to oversee and supervise 25 schools currently. I'm also a person in long-term recovery since March 8th of 1988. And I say that because I think it's really important that we put that out into the public and to remove that stigma that's attached to recovery, and also to be examples to those kids that we're going to be serving, and to let them know that we come from all walks of life, whether we're in education, whether we're a politician, whether we're in the service industry, lawyers, doctors, and so on and so forth. So I'm here honored to be here for your support, hopefully, in this endeavor and to continue on the partnership with the school district and the state of Nevada.
Well, we're very pleased about it, and certainly knowing how far-reaching issues like this are for our young people and adults as well. Couple of questions I would like you to address. One, how are—and this is more for the public to understand, how are students to get there? Are they going to be bused? Is it the responsibility of an adult? That's number one. Number two, is each student that's going to be in this recovery high school going to be assigned a counselor, an individual specific, who will be following up, because every day is a challenge for children who are really just starting this process?
You bet. Great questions. So one of the first things we looked at when we were first developing this over a year ago was to determine how are these individual students going to get there. So we have magnet schools all across the valley with magnet hubs that pick up students and drop off. Rancho High School is the closest magnet to this location. So what we'll do is the hubs across the valley, students will be able to get on these buses. They'll be dropped off at Rancho, and there'll be a shuttle bus that will take them to the school. We're also working with the Regional Transportation Commission to hopefully get vouchers for students if they want to take the city bus, and of course, they can have private transportation as well. I'm sorry, what was your second question?
The second was about assigning specific, an individual adult, to each one of these youngsters so that we haven't lost somebody through the cracks because nobody is helping.
Great question, again. So we partnered early on with the State Department of Health and Human Services with the state of Nevada. They have pledged and approved for positions for licensed alcohol and drug counselors that are going to work directly with the school. Plus, we're going to have a counselor on site that has a drug and alcohol background. And we also have partnered with other treatment centers that are also going to provide help as well. All of those individuals together are going to work in collaboration addressing the students' needs there. So we're probably going to have a half dozen individuals working with 100 students, which is a pretty good ratio on a daily basis, making sure that we're following up with them. We're also going to be doing random drug testing, students that they have to be part of, and they also have to be part of family counseling, which will be provided free of charge if they're not able to pay for those services as well. So these are all requirements of students that are attending this school and have to be signed off on in order for them to attend the school.
And meals?
Meals may serve through the school district. They'll be provided there if they need those meals as well. Obviously, students can bring their own meals as well.
And what will be provided as far as integrating these students as they are ready into extracurricular activities of music, drama, different things, to help them realize that they can be successful?
These are all great questions. As a former principal at Green Valley High School, I had one of the most amazing performing arts departments in the nation, and I'm a huge believer in the performing arts. We will bring the arts in. It's identifying what types we're going to have, whether it's music, performing arts, fine arts. It will be part of the curriculum. We don't know what that'll be yet, but it'll definitely be part of the curriculum as we integrate these kids. I know as a former principal and teacher that you have to connect with kids, you have to connect with them to keep them in school, and they have to want to be there. And so we're going to make sure that we have those available for the students.
Wonderful. It's a wonderful opportunity, and we all make mistakes in life, and sometimes we get caught deeper in, but really, to have a way to express ourselves, the arts is always the best. And so if you can bring that in, whether it's through music, or drama, or painting, or photography, whatever. And would that be paid for by the city to integrate that portion, or is that part of a school district cost?
Well, I'll be overseeing the school, and so I'm currently working on bringing music or the arts there now. The population's going to be small to start, so I'm looking at bringing musicians possibly from different nearby schools that could—we can sell preparation grids.
Painting is easy, and that doesn't, you know—I mean, any type—or claywork, anything like that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I agree 100%, and it's going to be part of their curriculum. Absolutely.
Yeah, so I mean, it's a wonderful, wonderful endeavor, and we're so excited about our youth development being part of this, and it's just great. And the fact that it's leadership in the country is even better, because we know that our problems here are no different than they are anywhere else in the world.
Absolutely.
So any other comments? Yes, please.
You bet I do. Mayor, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to certainly first recognize Clark County School Board member Kevin Childs in the audience with us today to celebrate this moment, as well as—Mr. Horn, you have a whole entourage. It looks kind of like over there of support for this. Thank you all for coming down here. This is historic, and as I said at the school board meeting, this is a moment in time when we are saying something very important about our community. The stigma, Mr. Horn, you talked about, and that's a big stigma in this community. We need to get over that. Addiction has affected so many families at every level of income, every stage of life, addiction has affected so many people. This says volumes about the Clark County School District and the city of Las Vegas' partnership moving forward to save a child's life. And let me just bring it out of one child, to save a child's life. Instead of incarcerating that kid, he or she gets the help they need. They get the recovery help, they get their education, and they move on in life. So a lot of tears were shed at that Clark County School Board meeting. And with your permission, Your Honor, can Mr. Childs approach the microphone? What I want to say, I'm going to make a motion to approve this, and it's a historic moment. And Mr. Childs, I think you agree with that, so I'd love to get your comments on the record.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mayor Protem, and the City Council members. I just want to say thank you for what you—oh, Kevin Childs for the record. Thank you. Sorry. But thank you for showing up to our board meeting, and with your support, with all of your support, we're going to make a difference in this town. The partnership that we have with the city of Las Vegas and the Clark County School District, we are doing amazing things with both of us, and the partnerships even in the community that are going to come and help us out. So again, I'm hoping that you guys will push that yes button to move forward, and I look forward to working with all of you guys into making a better educational system here in Las Vegas.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate that, Your Honor. With that, I will move to approve Agenda Item 31.
Thank you. This is motion to approve Agenda Item 31. Please vote, and please post. And we look forward to it, and congratulations. Wonderful day.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Okay, Agenda Item 32. Discussion for possible action regarding a petition filed by the Simple Environment Services Group pursuant to NRS 237.100, objecting to the adoption of Bill Number 2017-3, Ordinance 6572 pertaining to the collection and management of solid waste and recyclables. Our city attorney?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is the petition that's been filed with relation to the business impact statement.
Excuse me. I think I'd like to know your name.
Let me check. Val Steed, city attorney, still?
Over here, please.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to provide a little background, because we don't have too many of these petitions. As you know, back in 1999, the legislature adopted a requirement that certain types of ordinances be preceded by a business impact statement. We did one with reference to Bill Number 2017-3 relating to collection and management of solid waste and recyclable materials that constituted sending notice by mail to approximately 68 persons or businesses that are associated with the industry, as well as 11 entities consisting of chambers, Chamber of Commerce organizations, and other interested organizations. Also, a notice was published in the Las Vegas Review-Journal. There were a number of comments received. Quite a few were duplicates, but comments were received from approximately 38 different respondents, some within the city, some not within the city. Some had to do with the ordinance itself, some had to do with other items such as the existing ordinance, or with the relationship with the solid waste contractor. What the city did is report out those that pertain to the ordinance changes themselves, taking into account some concerns that were had with some of the definitions. In the process of processing that ordinance, we made some clarifying changes to address those things. The council approved the business impact statement, approved the ordinance. Now this petition has been filed, and the petitioner, if she'd like, has an opportunity to come forward and present her objections, following which I would—according to our process, I would make a recommendation, following that, to the council as to how to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Steed. May I entertain a motion, please?
Your Honor, Agenda 32, I make a motion to deny the petition.
Wait, wait, wait. You're going to hear from the petitioner. Please.
Sorry?
Sorry.
Now, this petition has been filed, and the petitioner, if she'd like, has an opportunity to come forward and present her objections, following which I would, according to our process, I would make a recommendation, following that, to the council as to how to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Steed. May I entertain a motion, please?
Your Honor, Agenda Item 32. I make a motion to deny the petition.
Wait, wait, wait. You're going to hear from the petitioner. Please.
Sorry?
Sorry.
Yep? Nope? Please. Yeah, our mics, these are temporary mics. Perfect. Thank you. If you'll just lean forward into it.
Got it. All right. Danielle Bassett against Simple ESG. To my prior statement during public comment, I again ask the council to recuse themselves based on conflict of interest. You are the same council who approved, I mean, let me backtrack. As you all know, the business impact study and its statement is the prelude to the ordinance approval and, at the same time, the contract approval with the franchise agreement with Republic. Obviously, it's extremely controversial. You guys have all heard all the opposition that the people who voted you in have. Therefore, you voting on this very appeal is a conflict of interest. I've filed numerous complaints, all which have been ignored. There's a few points I'd like to make on record. The business impact study said nothing about the higher increase rate that the city businesses and everybody else got with the CPI increase with Republic. There's a multitude of things, all of which, again, were in my complaint that were not addressed in Ms. Fretwell's statement. I'm not sure what else I can even say on this because clearly it's falling on deaf ears. I would actually like to ask the council, what's the next step? If you guys are denying the appeal, what do the business owners, what recourse do we have going forward? Because there doesn't seem to be one.
You would like that question answered? The statute doesn't provide a remedy, but there's always a court proceeding available to anybody who wants to go to court.
So, I would like to say, as a business owner and as a resident, I would assume that the council and the government are here to represent us and to represent us fairly. And I'm being told, and I've actually had conversation with Mr. Steed, trying to get ahead of this before it got this far, and I was told essentially the same thing, there's nothing here. And again, I would like you guys to consider, this is an extenuating circumstance in that this particular business impact statement had to do directly with the ordinance revisions and the contract approval that all happened really at the same time. So, while there's nothing in writing to provide for this, because of the extenuating circumstances that the agenda and when things were put on it created, I would think, I would hope, that the city would want to do something to address it. And if that's not the case, then I guess I will have to seek counsel. I'd love to hear anyone, any council member's statement on this.
I think at this point, I will entertain your motion, please.
I'll just call for the question in reverse to the dial of the petition. That's my motion, Your Honor.
Okay.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. I believe I voted against this at the time of, we had the hearing, so I will vote against this. I mean, I will vote for this now because I voted against the item originally, if that makes sense to you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion. Please vote. A motion to deny.
Not surprising. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion carries. We'll move on now to Agenda Item 33. Discussion For Possible Action Regarding The Appointment And Nominee Matt Walker To The Building And Safety Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee Into Place. Replace Nat Hodgson's, Hodgson's, three, whose term expired on May 2nd, 2017. Mr. Hodgson served since 2013, filling a seat designated for representative of the residential construction industry as the former executive director of the Southern Nevada Home Builders' Association, SNHBA, no longer wishes to serve and is recommending the appointment of the current SNHBA executive director, Matt Walker. This recommendation is supported by the building and safety director, Chris Knight. I move to appoint a new member to fill the residential construction industry seat, Matt Walker.
Okay.
So, and there, would you like to make a statement as to who you are and your acceptance of this?
Matt Walker, on behalf of Southern Nevada Home Builders, and just wanted to express our appreciation for the city acting so quickly to accommodate our request for additional representation on the third executive director since 1976.
Wow.
So, it's quite a change, and we appreciate the city being so flexible and appreciate the partnership on the Building Enterprise Fund.
And you accept the recommendation for the appointment?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Yes, please.
And, Your Honor, I think Nat did a great job, and I think Matt's going to do a better job. I'm putting the pressure on your shoulders, man. I've known Matt for quite a few years. My first campaign?
2009.
Yes, oh, yeah. We go way back, so he's going to make a fine replacement. I think he can do a great job there. Matt, looking forward to you serving there.
Thank you.
It, we not only moved the motion, but we voted, and it passed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Agenda Item 34. Discussion For Possible Action Regarding The Reappointment Of Member Donna Toussaint To The Planning Commission Term Expiration, June 2017. Ms. Toussaint was appointed by Councilman Anthony in Ward 4 representative in March of 17 to fill the unexpired term of Gus Philankas. Ms. Toussaint is eligible and wishes to be reappointed. So, our procedure, Councilman Anthony, do you want to re-move on this, please?
Move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve on 34. And please vote, Councilman Beers.
Councilman Beers, aye or nay?
In back. He's in the back, and he says aye. Thank you. And that motion carries. Agenda Item 35. Recommended Committee Bills Eligible For Adoption At This Meeting. Bill Number 2017-14. Councilwoman, would you like to have the bill read?
An ordinance pertaining to water use and water conservation updates various provisions of LVMC Chapters 14.08, 14.10, and 14.11, consistent with conservation initiatives, and recommendations of the Southern Nevada Water Authority, and provides for other related matters.
You want to make a motion on it?
Really, it's Councilman Coffin's request. Would you like to make the motion?
I'd like it to be, well, I think we'd like to just move for approval.
Okay, there's a motion to approve on Agenda Item 35. Please vote and please post. And that carries. Agenda Item 36. Bill Number 2017-15. Councilwoman, would you like the bill read?
Yes, please.
Bill Number 2017-15. An ordinance to update the city's regulations governing stormwater and stormwater management and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
Thank you. This motion to approve Agenda Item 36. Please vote. And that carries. Agenda Item 37 is going back to recommending Agenda Item Number 38. Bill Number 2017-17. Councilwoman, would you like the bill read?
Yes.
Bill Number 2017-17. An ordinance to adopt that certain development agreement entitled Cooperative Campus Development Agreement entered into between the city and the Board of Regents of the Nevada System of Higher Education on behalf of the College of Southern Nevada, and to provide for other related matters.
Attorney, to read the bill. You did, Councilman Anthony, or Councilman Coffin, to provide the report, make the motion, please.
Before they do, Your Honor?
Yes?
This is another historic moment. Finally clearing the road for the College of Southern Nevada.
Oh, there you are.
Out in Centennial Hills, which we're very excited about, so I just want to point that out.
Would you like to make the motion? I'm sure they can.
I'd love to make the motion. I would make a motion to approve Agenda Item 38, but I just want this council and our residents, especially in the Northwest, to understand how important this is. I've been working on this for 12 years.
I've got a way to go out.
Well, and it's interesting, they approached me before I was even elected.
You did?
Yes, and said, "We want this campus out in the Northwest," so it's a long process. And she, of course, has a lot to do with the Nevada System of Higher Education. The legislature, of course, approving funding, but they're moving forward, and it's an exciting time, so appreciate that, and that's my motion.
Okay. Motion to approve on Agenda 38. Please vote and please post. And Councilman Beers? Yep. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Recommending Bills Number, let's see, 39 through 43. Bills Number 2017-18 through 2017-22 will be heard at a later meeting. We'll move on to new bills. New bills. Items 44 through 48. 44 through 48, okay, will be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Monday, June 19th, 2017. City Attorney, would you read the new bills, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. Jeff Norkeck, Deputy City Attorney, for the record. Bill Number 2017-23. An ordinance creating the City of Las Vegas, Nevada Special Improvement District Number 813, Summerlin Village 26, ordering a street project, storm sewer project, sanitary sewer project, drainage project, and water project within the City of Las Vegas, Nevada, and providing other matters related thereto. Bill Number 2017-24. An ordinance concerning the City of Las Vegas, Nevada Special Improvement District Number 813, and assessing the cost of local improvements against the assessable property benefited by the local improvements, and providing other matters related thereto. Bill Number 2017-25. An ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale by the city of its special improvement district Number 813, Summerlin Village 26, local improvement bonds, Series 2017, approving the form of certain documents with respect to such bonds, ratifying action taken by city officers toward the issuance of such bonds, and providing other matters related thereto. Bill Number 2017-26. An ordinance to re-adopt the municipal co-provision making state law misdemeanors city misdemeanors if committed within the city. Bill Number 2017-27. An ordinance to adopt that certain development agreement entitled Development Agreement For The 250, entered into between the city and 180 Land Co., LLC, et al., and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you very much. New bills 2017-23 through 2017-27 are assigned to the recommending committee members, Councilman Barlow, Anthony, and Coffin. If any so designated or unable to attend, the clerk's office will coordinate finding substitute as necessary at my direction. Okay, now we're on to Agenda Item 49. Yes. This is a public hearing. Discussion For Possible Action To Consider Request For A Waiver And/or Reduction Of Fees Totalling $13,696.50 In Out-of-Pocket Costs And $39,000 In Civil Penalties For A Total Of $52,696.50. Recorded Against Property Located 1025 Bedford Road Property Owner Goldie C. Mottorelli, and this is a more of one with Councilwoman Tarkanian. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Council. Vicki Ozuna, Code Enforcement Supervisor. The item before you today is a public hearing for the request of waiver of fees and civil penalties at the request of the current property owner of 1025 Bedford Road. There are two abatements with fees and penalties that are outstanding on this property. The total out-of-pocket costs are $13,696.50, and the total outstanding daily civil penalties is $39,000, for a total of $52,696.50. The new property owner is requesting a waiver of hard-cost civil penalties and interest that have been assessed against the property. Staff recommends denial of this request.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to be heard, please push on the button and state your name for the record if you represent the owner or are the owner.
Good morning, Your Honor. Good morning, members of the council. Brian Delion from Camper Croll, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. We represent the new owner of the property. He did purchase his property at a trustee sale on March 21st, so after the first abatement, prior to the second abatement, was levied against the property. The new owner has done extensive rehab into the property, including he has put in a new door, painted the front facade. He has put in new, 20 tons of new rock in the front, covered the weeds, and put in the tarp to make sure the weeds don't grow back. He has expended a lot of funds on this property. I was able to, and Councilwoman Tarkanian graciously met with me yesterday so I could explain to her all the stuff that we plan to do with the property as well, including putting new countertops, new windows. It really is a gut job. The new property owner, again, bought the property, unfortunately, without knowledge of these liens, and so, we do request to, I guess, waive the fines, and as well as, we'll pay the hard cost. We understand the city's out-of-pocket on that. We are more than happy to pay that. And so, we would request a waiver of the fines in the amount of 90% to pay 10% of the fines of $3,900. So, I would, if you had any questions, that the council may have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this particular property? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
Excuse me.
And Councilwoman.
Thank you. Vicki, what was the amount we had determined on the fines?
The amount that we discussed was with a 10% --
Yes.
-- 90% reduction for 10%, $3,900, which would, then, with the outstanding hard cost, would be a total of $17,596.50.
All right. The reason why I'm going to move for a reduction of the 90% is because of the fact we still do not have, when the lien goes in, it's still not recorded in the county office in time for those who, you know, it takes a whole year sometimes. And I feel that he's already made significant progress on the property. He's promised to do more. We're going to hold him to that promise. That's not far from where we live, so we'll go buy it a lot and just make sure that those weeds don't come through that gravel, number one, and number two, that he follows through with everything. So, I move that we keep all the hard costs because we paid those, and the city should get that full amount back, and then I'll waive 90% of the other.
And is there a timeline for, or are you about to ask that? Are you putting a timeline on that?
I'm putting a timeline of six months.
Is that acceptable?
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you, Councilwoman Tarkanian.
What did you want to say?
Normally, we do 30 days, but if you want to do six months.
Oh, 30 days is what you usually do?
Yeah.
I know it.
30 days is fine as well, Your Honor. We can have it be 30 days.
You can do it in 30 days as well?
Yes, thank you. Absolutely.
Yeah, well, if not, then we'll be lenient because I did say a longer time. Well, I know what he's doing there, and I know that he's fighting to get the money done and get it all together, so that was my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. Thank you for coming down. Motion carries. Thanks so much. Agenda Item 50. Public Hearing Discussion For Possible Action To Consider Request For A Waiver And Reduction Of Fees Totalling $2,817.50 In Out-of-Pocket Costs And $19,500 In Civil Penalties For A Total Of $22,317.50. Recorded Against Property Located 3004 Merritt Avenue. Property Owner Paul Dufour, Ward 1. Councilwoman Tarkanian. This is a public hearing. I declare it open. Ms. Ozuna, please.
I just, good morning, Council and Madam Mayor. I'd like to report that the request, the applicant, has decided to withdraw his request, so.
Oh, okay.
And we just got it like two minutes ago, so.
Okay.
We did not reduce it very much, so I'm assuming that's the reason why. So, I'm assuming we strike it? Is that what we would do?
Correct.
So, I move to strike.
Thank you. There's motion to strike on 50. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 51's been abayed to September 6th. Okay, and now we are. Mayor Protem, you're going to do 52, but I'll go ahead and read these, okay? Items 52 through 54 may be considered one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public public hearing items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or a member in the public or member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. Agenda Item 52, EOT, 70168, applicant Samantha Inc., owner, I-Rent BNE LLC, and a request for an extension of time, and are approved. Special Use Permit, SUP 54969, proposed 5,892 square foot medical marijuana dispensary at 3500 West Sahara C1, limited commercial zone in Ward 1. With Councilwoman, I will be abstaining on that, and if there's any issue on that, Councilman Mayor Protem will take it. will take it. Agenda Item 53, EOT 70188, applicant owner Fremont Properties LLC, and a request for an extension of time for a non-conforming liquor establishment tavern at 1930 Fremont, C2, general commercial zone, Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. And Agenda Item 54, EOT 70235, applicant owner RJ RLV LLC, and a request for an extension of time for a non-conforming liquor establishment tavern at 3220 North Jones Boulevard Suite Number 1, C1, limited commercial zone, Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. All items are recommended for approval by staff. Item 52, a non-public hearing items, and items 53 and 54 are public hearing items which I declare open. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on 53 and 54? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Again, as I mentioned, I'll be abstaining on 52 because it pertains to medical marijuana and one of my sons is involved in that industry. I'll be voting on the others. So may I have a motion on items 52 through 54, Mayor Protem?
Make a motion on items 52 through 54, Your Honor, and approve.
So.
She votes now?
Okay, 53 and 54, and 52 you abstained to me. Excellent. And they carry. Thank you very much. Agenda Item 55 has been obeyed to the 19th of July, and Agenda Item 56 has been obeyed to August 16th. And so we're on to Agenda Item 57. VAC 69194, public hearing, applicant owner HV Apartments LLC, for possible action and a request for a petition to vacate 20-foot wide public alley south of Alta between Desert Lane and Martin Luther King, Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing which I declare open as the applicant or representative present. Who would like to speak?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilpeople, thanks for having us. I'm Craig Palacios. I'm Principal of Bunnyfish Studio, 208 South Maryland Parkway. I'm here with our client, Brian Plaster, who is making a substantial investment to make this corner of Alta and Desert Lane much nicer for the neighborhood and for people and for the tenants. During the process of this investment that he's making, he became aware of the Project Neon, which we're all excited about, and it's going to be also a tremendous advancement for this neighborhood and for our city. But what's happening here, just to sort of put it in a nutshell, and I know most of you are very aware of it, is the buildings across the alley from Brian's are going away and are being absorbed by Project Neon. As such, the alley that goes behind Brian's property only services Brian's property in the new plan. So by the recommendation of NDOT, he has asked for an abatement of the property to become part of his, and he will maintain it and care for it with the ability for any of the jurisdictions to access it at will.
What was that sentence again?
Oh, any of the jurisdictions, water, who are the water sewer, fire, public works to access the property at will.
So the crash-through gates?
Right now, there isn't a design for gates. We would like to gate it. It's been asked that we don't, and we accept that condition.
Wow.
Because we're in a very growth, a rapid growth area in what's happening in that particular street, and I just want to see how things turn out and to leave that open way in case it might be needed for an emergency or something like that, other than fire and so forth. So at this point of time, that's what I asked, and you agreed.
Yeah, the condition is that we don't gate it, and then we accept that condition.
This is public hearing. Anybody else wishing to be heard on these items? Mr. Parago, any comment?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Just very briefly, the alleys are supposed to be vacated, are adjacent to the apartment complex, as the applicant has said, and on the other side, the commercial properties are being demolished as part of the Project Neon. That's why staff is in support, and given the conversation, I have a proposal for that condition, if, okay. Proposed condition, no fence or wall shall be installed across a vacated alleyway.
On either side of it, I would gather. On either side of the alleyway?
No fence or wall shall be installed across the vacated alleyway.
Which would be either side?
Across the entire vacated alleyway. Sure, we'll add across the entire vacated alleyway.
And what does PD stand for on the map? Plan Development?
Plan Development.
And will Pinto Lane, which is now strange, will it again, do you know, go through from Martin Luther King up to Shadow? I mean, it looks like it might, but that was what it looked like before, I think.
Mayor, I may be able to ask that question. Brian Plaster, 2694 Palomino Lane. Pinto Lane will have an access right there, and there's also going to be a new freeway entrance right across from Pinto. There's going to be a little way just past Highland Villas if you're coming, if you're going south on Martin Luther King, and I think Craig might be able to show some rendering on some of the NDOT maps, but there's going to be a turnoff going right onto Desert Lane about 50 yards past the building. So it's going to, there's going to be great public access for transportation all the way around on all sides onto Desert Lane, both from Alta and from MLK.
Wow. And how many units is your building?
Our unit, we have 44 two-bedroom, one-bath units there, and we only, and the parking, the parking is limited by this. When NDOT cut off part of the public right-of-way, they also cut off about six of our parking spots. So really, we want to make sure we can control the parking in that area, and, you know, being able to gate it would be a great, you know, ability for us down the road, but I understand Councilwoman Tarkanian's objections to that, and we're okay accepting that condition. But I just want to make the point that there's a bus stop that's going to go right in front of Highland Villas, between Highland Villas and the bus stop. I'm afraid that the bus stop traffic might try and go right through the public right-of-way, so I just, if I want to do some view fencing or some screen fencing behind the bus stop, I'm just wondering if that might be okay as part of that condition.
And two, I'd be curious about if the bus stop's going to be there. Is there a cutaway planned?
Yes, there is a, yeah, that's all part of the Project Neon development. If you go over there right now, you can actually see where the cutouts are. They've cut the road out, and you can get a really good visualization of what the new road's going to look like. But MLK is swinging pretty far to the west, right? I mean, it's going to be less than 40 feet from our building.
Yeah, I drive by both ways every day, coming and leaving work, and so I'm wondering what that bus stop is going to be.
I think a lot of things are happening there, and I think you probably will come back again at another time, and when we know what's there and how it's all going to be affected, and then we can move on that. I'm not saying never, I'm just saying at this time because it's in such a state of flux.
Okay, so you're going to move on that then?
Understood.
So with the condition involved about not closing the area we're giving you, I move to approve.
Okay, there's a motion to approve on Agenda Item 57 with the amended conditions.
With the condition, yes.
Right. Please vote and please post. Great, motion carries.
It sounds like a good project.
Are you open or ready?
Yes, we are open. We have, we've renovated about 14 units so far. We've got, you know, quite a few more under construction right now, and we're trying to finish up most of the project by the end of the year, but it might spill over into the first quarter. But NDOT is telling us that they're going to have all that, the entire intersection finished by about October of this year, that MLK-Alta intersection, so we're trying to time our grand opening to be when that area of the landscaping and the road is complete.
Excellent. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Agenda Item 58, VAR 69167, public hearing, applicant owner Angel Atilio Carras Sanchez, for possible action or request for variance to allow one-foot side yard setback where five feet's required and a two-foot rear yard setback where 15 feet's required for an existing addition to a single-family dwelling on .17 acres located at 6104 Kimbaloo Circle, R1 Single Family Residential Zone. This is from Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Planning and staff recommend denial. This is a public hearing. I declare it open as the applicant or representative are both present.
Both present.
Okay, and let's start with Mr. Parago.
Thank you, Your Honor. This request is a result of a code enforcement case. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary hardship to justify the request has been presented, therefore staff is recommending denial as the applicant has created self-imposed hardship.
Thank you very much. Would you introduce yourselves then and tell us what you're about?
Victor Knight, Architect, 9582 Irish Flat Court, Los Angeles, Medicaid, 9178.
My name is Atilio Angel.
Welcome.
Good morning.
So tell us about your plans, what you have been asking for.
The applicants constructed this addition to the west side of their house for family members that were going to be moving in due to some financial difficulties. Through the process of construction, they did overbill the easements, and they were tagged by zoning enforcement, which caused us to come here, and that's the point where I came on into the project to help them get through the land use process. I've met with Councilwoman Tarkanian on this project as well. She suggested we get fire department involved to see what their recommendations would be. They recommended a one-hour wall be constructed there, as well as five feet back on the roof structure to be one hour as well, which we're okay with. And then Councilwoman Tarkanian also suggested that we increase the landscaping in the front yard, as well as in the adjacent side yard areas, to help alleviate the visual impact that we are on the property line.
And I gather therefore fire's been in to see you and its approval.
Yes, they sent us a written memo, and they told us there were about five things they recommended you do, and you agreed to do them.
Yes.
I have to tell, I'm very bothered when we have a request to approve something that's already been done without going through the proper channels. And I talked with Vicky Ozuna, and I guess you are fine double for this if you do that. Is Vicky still here? No, okay. Because I feel there should be some type of action that you have that shows you don't do this. This is very, very wrong. But we have worked it out with the fire, and your neighbors, did you have them bring letters or give us?
Yes, we had four or five approvals, including the adjacent neighbor that were mostly affected.
You had the neighbors who did come forward and say it was all right with them. It's in a place where, as you look at the neighbor's house, it doesn't seem to be a big problem because it's only a narrow area they have there, but anyway, Tom, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. In this case, the building permit fees will be doubled, so that's the penalty that Ms. Ozuna was talking about.
Thank you. That's, the building fees are doubled as sort of a punishment for doing this. You know that. The building fees are doubled because you went ahead and did this without permission of the city.
Which amounts to how much is that penalty so they understand and agree to pay it? While he's doing that, I'm going to ask anybody else in the public, and this is a public hearing item, so if you have any questions or comments you'd like to make on this particular agenda item, please come forward. I'll close the public hearing, and therefore...
Your Honor, I can't make that calculation. Since the time they pulled the building permits, they have to do the valuation, and it's based on those other factors, so I can't tell you what that penalty is.
Okay.
Yes.
Your name, please?
Jody Hefner. I'm not a neighbor of this particular spot, but when we put the cart before the horse or whatever it is, a horse before the cart, and then allow the variance, kind of makes me nuts, to ask permission after the fact, it's not acceptable.
Well, that's why they double the cost to them. They double the fee to them for that reason.
Thank you.
And if he did not have the neighbors saying all right, then we would have asked him to pull it down. But you're very right. I have to tell you, it bothers me a lot too. Bother me a lot too. Thank you. So I'm going to move that with all the conditions set by the fire department to be followed by you, we do grant this variance, and also that we have planning watch the vegetation that's there because the way it's sitting further back, you can put vegetation in front so you don't even see it practically, if they do the vegetation right.
Yes, we will send somebody out there and make sure that that's done properly.
And also, if I could ask that it be in writing that they sign that they're accepting that penalty, yes, and Councilman Deere, or Councilman, Mr. Brian Scott, good morning.
Mayor, good morning. I was just going to ask if we've established exactly how much that double the amount actually is?
We had asked, but they had not. That's why I wanted to get it signed once you have it.
That, again, they will not be able to pull their building permits without paying that, and if they don't pull their building permits, then they, well, let me just read a couple of conditions that are part of this variance. One is all necessary building permits shall be obtained and final inspection shall be completed and applies to Title 19 in all codes as required by the Department of Building and Safety. Condition three, all necessary building permits shall be obtained within 90 days of final approval of the variance. So all of that is covered. They have to pull their building permits, and the fees will be established at that time, and they will have to pay them, or this whole thing goes away and the building has to come down.
But you don't know how much they would have to pay. What's the amount you have to pay if we double?
It's based on building valuation. They determine that at the time that they go to the building department. I can't tell you.
Okay.
I guess we'd have to do this, the applicant would have to agree to it on the record if it's some, an amount he could not pay, you know, $5,000, $10,000, or whatever it would be, then he'd probably have to come back to you to then ask for some kind of dispensation from that amount, so.
So if they cannot pay the amount when they get to filing and approval, then they will, it will come back to you? Is that what we're saying?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
Okay.
And possibly before you as well, Mayor, just so that you could either waive the fee or something else could be arranged.
Okay. So you understand that? What was the fee without the penalty? Do you know what that was? So we know we have a starting point.
Unless they have already gone to obtain their building permits, I wouldn't know what fees would be applied.
I mean, are they thousands? Is it 1,500? Do we, ballpark?
Madam Mayor, that...
Yeah, that would be...
If we could try to be great.
You gentlemen, just wait, we're going to call and see what this is, because who knows? It could be $20,000. I'm sure you're not about to go running over there and put in $20,000, so let's just see what it is. I think that will help.
Yes, yes.
Madam Mayor, usually on building permits, based on the scope of work, the Department of Building and Safety will evaluate it based on the amount of hours it takes to review the building permits and associated costs for those disciplines to review it. Something of this nature wouldn't necessarily be thousands of dollars. Whatever that evaluation is, the department at that point would then assess the addition, just doubling that fee. At this point, it would only be an estimate, and we'd have to have somebody from Building and Safety to give you that number.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to reemphasize that this is all depending upon you finishing everything that the fire department has recommended, which you have assured me you would do, and you put vegetation in front of that, so it's not an obvious jag out there. So that, I think, would not be seen by the front, by people going by. It wouldn't look bad, and the neighbors have agreed on the back part, so that seems fine. But if you don't do that, then we're going to say you have to tear it down.
Yes, ma'am.
So you gentlemen, what I'd like to do is, I don't know, just recess this particular agenda item, have a seat. We'll continue on until Mr. Scott gets back with a number from Ms. Ozuna, is that all right with you?
That's fine.
And just, you can have a seat right there, and we'll close that down. So we will move forward on Agenda Item 59, RQR 68803, a public hearing. Applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner, YW Sang LLC, for possible action or required review of an approved special use permit U0271-93 for an existing 50-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 3101 West Sahara, C1, limited commercial zone, Ward 1 with Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff recommends denial. This is a public hearing which I declare open as the applicant or representative present.
Scott Nafsky. Scott Nafsky with Lamar Advertising, 1863 Helm Drive.
Thank you. Mr. Paragow?
Thank you, Your Honor. When the staff initially did their field work to evaluate the site, they found it to be blighted with trash and graffiti, and therefore initially our recommendation was for denial, and that's why this one is on public hearing and not 1+1. However, since that time, I met with the applicant, and they immediately went out there, cleaned up the site, we went back and inspected it. Everything is in great condition, and therefore we are now recommending approval.
Thank you very much. Anyone here on this item wishes to speak to this Agenda Item 59? I'll close public hearing. Councilwoman.
I'm surprised that you let that get in such disarray, not telling them, hey, we'll pull our sign if you don't get that cleaned up. Talking about the people on the lot, the area, because in the past, you've always been very good about doing that. You may have to keep a close eye on them, because you will be held responsible, but you're the one that has the heavy leverage over them. And that leverage is what you pay them each month for that sign, I mean, what they pay, yeah. You pay them, right?
Yep.
So anyway, because of the improvement and planning now feels it's all right, I move to approve.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 58. 59, excuse me. Please vote and please post. The motion carries. Mr. Ross, the mayor pro tem, do you want to vote on that?
I do.
A positive, aye, on that, please. That's a yes. Thank you. And did Mr. Scott return yet?
Your Honor, Mr. Longstein did, just on our online estimator...
Fabulous IT programming.
Right? Just because we have such wonderful IT, we're able to provide that service for our customers, and as we are now a customer, he was able to do a rough estimate. Don't hold us to it, but I think he has a ballpark number for you.
Excellent. So, gentlemen, if you'll come back up to the podium, and you beat Mr. Scott back. Okay, do you want to hear the accurate number and see how good your estimate is? Or do you want to give your estimate first? Well, let's hear the estimate.
All right. Madam Mayor, based on single-family residential addition, 1A construction type at 588 square feet, the total estimate, based on our estimator, is $1,351. So then you would double that, so we're at $2,700?
Approximately. Approximately.
Approximately.
And Mr. Scott?
I couldn't get ahold of Ms. Ozuno, so she must still be in transit or office.
Oh, so you're the winner there.
He's the winner.
He wins because he couldn't get any information.
Yes, you're the winner.
So, assuming that, and if we raised it even to 2,800, just to cover, is that all right with your client to be able to?
Did he say type 1A construction?
Yes.
It'll probably be 5A, which, I mean, it would lower the fee, but, I mean, 2,600 is good. Even at 2,600, we're fine with that.
Okay. What's that? Please?
Changing it to 5A, the estimate without the double fees is $943, so 1,800.
$1,900. So you're under $2,000.
And I just want to say, please don't do that again without going through the city, because we will ask you to tear it down the next time. So I move to approve with all conditions.
On Agenda Item 58, there's a motion to approve. Please vote.
Your Honor, I'm sorry, I apologize, but we might want to place one more condition because there is nothing that would require that landscaping in the front that you had asked for.
Yes.
So, one additional condition for your consideration. Landscaping shall be installed to mitigate visual impact of the addition. I'm sorry, landscaping shall be installed in the front yard to mitigate visual impact of the addition.
Yes. So, and that's basically what I said with a lot more words. Okay, then I move to approve with that included in the conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve with all of the aforementioned conditions. Please vote and please post. Best of everything.
Thank you very much.
And never build again without coming in first.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 60 to set the date. Any appeals filed or required public hearings instruct the City Clerk to set the public hearing dates in appeals, city planning commission meetings, dangerous building, or nuisance litigation. Thank you very much. And we will now go on to our second citizen participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless the subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, please, and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as amount of time, any single speakers allowed may be limited. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? And if you'll remove your hat, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's a little cold in here.
Yeah, we'll set it to three minutes.
Yes. For the record, my name's Warren Williams, and first I'd like to give condolences to the family of Tahhee, a brown farmer. And I'm the best in my ability approaching this as a public safety issue. There's probably a lot more involved than that. You guys know better than I would. But as an African American, embracing this government, the city council, as a representative government of the people, often I'll speak on behalf of black men, teens, and boys, that we often feel we're not being represented. Around the nation, there have been killings of black men by the police. Now in Las Vegas, we've had a recent, May 14th, of the incident that happened at the Venetian Casino Hotel, where the police officer, La Perre, ended up tasing Tahhee some seven times, then beat him and choked him. And the findings that's reported is that he died from being choked. But in viewing the video, it's far more involved than just a choking case, and there rise major concerns that I asked his counsel, that the usual power funds, ability to put some whatever pressure, whatever, on the DA to request more criminal charges filed against the police officer, as well as the security guards that held this man down. He went to, I'm sorry to consider if you're not familiar with it, from the reports that we have, and that is he asked for help. And asking for help, whatever was said made him leave to the closest exit possible. He was then chased, confronted, verbally abused, tased. When he failed the first time, me and Tase reaching on his back, verbally abused more, and it was giving commands, get on your stomach, get on your stomach. At that point, though, we don't believe there's any reason for him to be chased or tased, but when he was tased at that time, the officer should have just stayed or hit our call for backup. Another major concern is that the partner, who was present when Tahhee first approached him, is nowhere in the video. So why would the officer not be with his partner, yet he's unidentified or she, and is not named? After being now on his back, the security guards come, they help hold him down, alarmed, terrified, and the officer, La Perre, hits him, and then again proceeding choking him. It is alleged that he had a faint pulse, but there's no evidence of that. We're only having other officers alleging that, at least that was said in the brief that was made, 72-hour brief. It's a horrifying case. If you have not seen the video, I urge everyone to look at that video so you really embrace all that's being said. I do have a following here that I'd like to submit for the record. It details some solutions that we propose, such as tranquilizer bullets. The end of ACP has filed, I think the ACLU as well, about banning the chokehold.
Thank you.
So I keep going to every factor that's there, but I do urge the council to review all of that.
The sheriff has moved ahead on this, and I'm sure it will be exactly where you have suggested it should be with the district attorney's office. Thank you for coming down, I appreciate it.
One last thing, if I just could, I just, there's also an initiative that's in Seattle, Washington, A73, I believe is correct, it is in the paperwork, that I urge you also to consider, because a lot of time, a charge is filed, but then the real criminal case still gets decided in the wrongful way, and they just claim malice. I'd say they didn't do it with malice, and then often they can walk on that.
Thank you for coming down and speaking with us. Anyone else wishing to address counsel? Okay, I will move on to Agenda Item 62 now. Council member recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Any members of council who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda, we'll start with you, Councilman Coffin, since you're up and ready to roll.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have nothing to add to what we've heard today. This was an enlightening hearing, because we today moved quicker than we have in many, many months, and I think that we have loaded the agenda to the 21st of June, so that if it would be all right, we could prepare for dinner that evening, as well as breakfast and lunch. But we're going to have a terrible responsibility that day, deciding the fate and fortunes of a good number of people around this valley. So I encourage all members to attend, and I certainly hope that the public will show up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I have asked that we have food brought that can be brought out to the dais individually, so we can just keep running right through and not stop, because we do expect it to be a long day.
Yes.
Your turn.
What do you want me to do?
You would like to make any announcements.
Oh, I don't have any announcements to make. Are you mean, is this a close of the meeting?
Can you believe it? At 11:30, yes!
Oh, my gosh, then I do, yes. At 11:30, how do we make that? I'd just like to state that on June 23rd, a Friday, we will be at Firefighters Memorial Park at 6401 West Oke Road. That's across from Manazza High School. And we will then have a movie called Rogue One, which you can see on the screen. It's a Star Wars story which begins at dusk. Please keep in mind that the movie is rated PG-13. Also, please bring blankets or low-back chairs and seating that's on the grass. We will have free popcorn and water while supplies last. We will also be inviting an ice cream truck or a snow cone truck in case you want to purchase additional food. And then, as a reminder, the short-term rental ordinance will be appearing before the recommending committee on Monday, June 19th, and that meeting begins at 10:00 a.m. in the city council chambers at 495 South Main Street. The recommending committee reviews the ordinance and may recommend amendments prior to it appearing before the full city council, which would be on the 21st. I encourage everyone who is interested in this issue to attend this meeting, particularly if you live within the city and you have not had an opportunity to voice your opinion on this issue. We have had many people from the county who have come here because they have purchased land that they are using now for short-term rentals. But I also want to have those within the city that the short-term rentals affect, I hope that they, too, will come and voice whatever feelings they have. I encourage everyone who is interested in this issue to attend the meeting, particularly if you have not had an opportunity to voice your opinion on this issue so far. The city council anticipates that it will discuss the short-term rental ordinance again at the city council, as I stated, on Wednesday, June 21st, at 11:30 a.m., time certain, in city council chambers at 495 South Main Street. Now, that's, of course, if the recommending committee forwards it on to the city council. We expect it to, but you never know what might happen. This meeting is also important to attend to have your voice heard, so both the recommending and the city council, the 19th and the 21st. I have said many times, change can only happen if the community gets involved. I've said many times, I can't do alone, business can't do alone, schools can't do it alone. We have to have our citizens working together with all of us as a team in order to keep our neighborhoods the way we want to have them. And the time is now. That's it.
Thank you very much. Why don't you go ahead, then? Then you can...
Okay, sure. Your Honor, I think, you want to turn the moment over to Betsy real quick?
Okay.
Ms. Farrell?
Yeah, there it goes. I just wanted to take a quick moment and introduce Jordan Rogers, who is here with us today. She's been shadowing me this morning. She's our summer intern from the University of Georgia. She's a master's in public administration student there, and is anxiously awaiting her next semester, where she has to take four classes, which she is kind of chagrined about, including public policy and finance. Sorry, Councilman Beer, she should love it, but some people aren't in that same ilk with you. Anyway, we're really excited to have her here, working in the manager's office over the summer, and I just wanted to welcome her and say congratulations on sitting through your first city council meeting today.
And Mr. Scott?
Mayor and councilman, if I may, introduce you to Alexa Green. She is a first-year law student at the University of Akron Law School. She is born and raised in Las Vegas. Her dad went to high school with me. I didn't know her until she told me.
Really?
But yeah, it's the same year or two, I think, so.
At her high school?
Yeah, so she attended Rancho High School for two years, home of the Rams, that's my alma mater, as well as, and graduated from Palo Verde High School.
Awesome.
And she'll be with us, it's all about August of this summer.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, how about it, Councilman Beer, you go next.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think that our next meeting will be excellent experience for your four, your four class semester that's coming up. We'll have to see about that. We'll be doing coffee with the councilmen on Friday, June 9th, 7:30 to 9 o'clock. You will be able to speak there, even though we're showing a Charlie Chaplin video right there. Yeah, there you go. So on Friday, June 9th, 7:30 to 9 o'clock, Rachel's Kitchen up in Summerland, behind fabulous Freddy's. The actual address, 9691 Trailwood Drive. We'll be there from 7:30 to 9, having a cup of coffee, listening to neighbors, finding out if they have any ideas or thoughts on how we operate the city. We'll be doing a Ward Two Dive-In Movie up at the Pavilion Center Pool, up there between Palo Verde and Rogich, $4 a person. Doors open at 7:30, movie at 8 o'clock. Your four bucks in addition to the movie in the nice, cool pool also gets you a free popsicle while supplies last. Ward Two Movie in the Park is going to be The Secret Lives of Pets. This will be on Saturday, June 24th. We'll be starting the movie at dusk at Bruce Trent Park, that's at the corner of Rampart and Vegas Drive. Bring blankets or low-back chairs. I will have a hacksaw for anyone who brings a high-backed chair. We'll just cut the back off. Free popcorn and water while supplies last. We'll also be having conversations with the councilmen on Tuesday, June 27th, 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., close to the Ward Four, Ward Two border. So, following the success we did with Beers with Beers and Tarkanian last year, we're going to be doing an event together with Councilman Anthony on June 27th at the Edge of Town Tavern, way up the top in Cheyenne. Hope you can all come out and join us for that evening.
Aren't you going to call it Border Beers?
Border Beers.
Beers on the Border?
Beers on the Border with, yeah, Anthony and Beers. Or Bob and Anthony, A-B-A-B-E. Aba-Cab, it's Genesis. Okay. All right, let's get serious. If you have to do business with the county, you can either drive all the way down to City Hall, or you can go to the Sahara West Library, where there is a business licensing kiosk. There you can perform a pretty large variety of transactions that you otherwise would have to come downtown to do with the city. You can see a list there on your screen. Once again, that is at the Sahara West Library. June 7th, 1982, we can all remember that date, 35 years ago, Elvis Presley's Graceland Mansion in Memphis, Tennessee, opened as a tourist attraction.
Oh, my, look at that.
The second most visited residence in America, behind the White House.
I was going to say.
And one that I think with concerted effort, we could move here to Las Vegas. That's all we got, Your Honor?
Is that, look at how, oh, that was 1982. I was going to say, boy, is that a reasonable visiting ticket, but that was many years ago.
I think the only thing is probably children under three are probably still free.
That is awesome. Thank you. All right, Mr. Scott, I understand before I turn it to Councilman Anthony, you had other pearls.
Yes, ma'am, just a personal note. You know, on June 30th, 2016, I was sworn in as the 88th and 1st African American. You know, on June 30th, 2016, I was sworn in as the 88th and 1st African American President.
And we were so proud.
Of the State Bar Nevada. Thank you, I appreciate that.
And you survived.
I did, I did. On June, on June 29th of this year, I will be ending my, my term. So 22 days from now, I'll be ending my term as State Bar President. I wanted to thank you, the mayor and the council and the city staff for all their support and all of their good wishes and encouragement during this year. I left something for each of you in your offices, so when you go up there, I hope you can, you'll enjoy it.
Get out of jail free.
I know. That's up to my brother. He works for Metro, so that part you can take with him. But I just wanted to thank you for all your encouragement and support, and this year's been very difficult in terms of the amount of work and travel and things like that, but I appreciate your kindness and your patience.
I was going to recommend you for a second year.
No. It's my 11th year on the Board of Governors, so this is my last year. I'll be an ex-officio member next year. But it's been a great year and very busy, but I do appreciate your support.
Well, we're so proud of you, and it was our honor. I mean, we really were proud of you. And I really, I can't believe it's been a whole year. It seems like just a couple of months ago.
22 days, and I'm, I'm done.
And how much traveling did you do?
I traveled over 18,000 miles. Six different cities, states, about six different counties. I've given 18 speeches, ripped one pair of pants. And, and then there's a, and there's a number of other little things, but it's been quite a journey. I've got Flag Day in Reno next, the 14th. I'm presenting a flag to the Second Judicial District Court on the 14th of June in Reno, and then I have Texas, and then I'm done.
So what are you going to do for a follow-up?
Uh, that's it.
Are you going to run for governor?
Uh, no. We'll, we'll see. I'm going to relax for a little while, so.
Okay, well, we're proud of you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Yeah, no, 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 we're real proud. Okay, Councilman Anthony.
Thank you. Yeah, let's put that Charlie Chaplin. So there you go, in Ward Four, we're going to have a movie in the park. Charlie Chaplin will be Saturday, June 10th, at 8:00 p.m. at Gerheim Park. Be a few vignettes of Charlie Chaplin's Silence. If you haven't seen one of these, they're really fun to watch, celebrating 100 years of film icon Charlie Chaplin from classics made in 1917. Lawn seating, bring your lawn chairs, your picnics, blankets, and anything else you want to have a nice time that evening watching Charlie Chaplin. And the second one is a, a new movie that we're going to use in Ward Four at the Police Memorial Park. Enjoy the 1973 classic American Graffiti film starring Richard Dreyfuss, Ron Howard, Harrison Ford, Paul La Matt, Wolfman Jack, Bo Hopkins, and more, directed and co-written by George Lucas. American Graffiti is an American coming-of-age comedy drama set in Modesto, California. The film is a study of the cruising and rock and roll cultures popular among the post-War II baby boom generation. The film is told in a series of vignettes telling the story of a group of teenagers and their adventures in their last summer night before college. This Academy Award-winning nominated classic was voted one of the American Film Institute Top 100 Films of All Time. Discover Drag Racing, Inspiration Point, Drive-ins All Over Again, and this nostalgic look back in 1962. The incredible soundtrack brings you the most memorable rock and roll hits of the era. The movie may not be suitable for young children. Parental discretion advised. We'll have free popcorn, water, and bring whatever you want on June 16th, 7:00 p.m. at Police Memorial Park in Ward Four.
I remember that movie. It was cool in those days. Look at the hairdo on that girl. Wow. And the cars were cool. Okay, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to know, Councilman Anthony's getting all retro on us here. I just want to know if you, are we be dressed in the Charlie Chaplin costume, the mustache, and, just, just checking. I'm just trying to bring out your inner Charlie, is all I'm trying to do, if I want to do it with you. That is a photograph of Joe Engel and myself in Judge Kerns's office a couple of weeks ago. The city donated $5,000 to There's No Hero in Heroin, which Joe Engel started the first chapter here in Nevada, right here in Las Vegas. Joe lost a son to heroin addiction, so it was only fitting, as we recognize the school district today and in our, in our contribution to the recovery high school, that, that we continue to help out with the addiction issues, the opiate issues in this community. Joe, I've known Joe since we were kids, and he's done a phenomenal job of bringing awareness, and he's part of that crew with Jeff Horn and Don Jersey as well, who's, who has been affected by this, his family as well, so it was, it was a great deal. And Judge Kerns, we kind of surprised him, Your Honor. Judge, Judge got him in there on a false pretenses, and then we walked in the back door and, and presented. His wife was with me, and, and it was, it was a great deal to do, and he was kind of in tears. But we really tried to make our big impact in the addiction issues in our community. So thank Joe for all his work, and, and we'll move on. But likewise, in Ward Six, Centennial Hills, it is summertime, too, so we've got Movie in the Park coming up as well. It is going to be Mo' Wannam, Friday, June 9th. That is this Friday, as soon as the sun goes down. And I'm sure my wife and staff are making me wear a costume, Councilman Anthony. Just want to run that by you. It is free for families. Bring the lawn chair, blankets, whatever you want. There will be also free water and popcorn while supplies last. Did I mention it's free? So come on out and enjoy the evening with me, and it'll be a lot of fun.
And what's nice is you've given an insignia there for the Las Vegas Hawaiian Civic Club.
Yeah, I think, actually, we're going to have, I think we're going to have some entertainment out there. I believe Christine's shaking her head, yes. So we're going to have some authentic Polynesian entertainment out there. So plan on coming out there. It's going to be a lot of fun. We always have a lot of fun at these Movies in the Park because we, we like to goof around, so. And then the next day, interestingly enough, it is our annual fishing derby at Floydland Park at Tulley Springs. And it is free as well. Starts at 7:30 in the morning. The world-famous Girl Scouts will be out there flipping pancakes for $5. So come on out. We do partner with Fish and Wildlife Department. They bring out 100 fishing poles. I get to run around the lake and help kids fish, and that little girl right there caught her first fish ever at Tulley Springs Park in the city of Las Vegas, and she was so excited about it. That was last year. I don't think I'll be running around the pond.
Good knee.
Am I good knee?
Good knee.
Yeah, it was good then. It's going to be better now. But again, it's free for families. Come on out. We'll be giving out prizes for the smallest, the largest, the first, the second, and the strangest, because some other things have been caught in that lake, too, that have been quite interesting.
Loch Ness Monster.
Yeah, Loch Ness Monster. And of course, it's that time of year when we are, it's, it's election season, so just encourage everybody to get out and vote. It's the last three days of early voting, today, tomorrow, and Friday, at those locations out in Cent, it's the Centennial Hills Voting Trailer, next to Chauvin Parkway and Centennial Center. Of course, you can always vote here at City Hall. General Election Date is open 7:00 a.m. in all those locations out in the Northwest, if you need to vote in, out in Ward Six and Centennial Hills. So encourage everybody to get out and vote. And again, our continued partnership with Nevada Childseekers, which we recognize the poster winner of the, of the year, year this morning. And we do have a missing young lady. Her name is Legee Ronise Harris. She's 15 years old. She was last seen in the area of Swenson and Flamingo, and last seen wearing a white t-shirt, light blue basketball shorts with red band, a red band in her hair. Please, if anyone knows where this young lady is, her whereabouts, please contact the Las Vegas Metro Police Department at 702-828-3111, or Nevada Childseekers, 702-458-7009. And it's always easy to find me, Your Honor, and council members, just, you can go to LasVegasNevada.gov, that's our website. You can also pick up the phone and use the old-fashioned 702-296-154, or find me on social media. Pretty easy to find. That's it, Your Honor, thank you.
And a great staff follow you around. They're always with you. It's wonderful. So just closing this down, first of all, thank our staff, IT, and we made it through with these strange new little diddles here, and hopefully they'll be replaced by the 21st as we keep upgrading our technology. Congratulations. I think tomorrow's the last day of school in the public schools, and to the 2017 graduates, graduates from our high schools in the Las Vegas Valley. As you embark on your next segment of your journey, we hope you will continue to learn,